I see quite a few LNC members, so Karen, whenever you're ready, we can go ahead and start the recording, get this party started.
Okay, it has been recording, but you know, I clipped that out before I load it. So are we calling to order at 7:04 Eastern?
Yes.
Okay, let me just get that down. All right, even though, I'm gonna do the formal roll call now. Mr. Nikala?
Present.
Mr. Dar?
Present.
I am present. Mr. Redpath?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Bost?
Present.
Mr. Malagon?
Present.
Mr. Dasing? Do not believe he's here. Mr. Ford?
Here.
One moment, I'm just marking Mr. Dasing. Mr. Nana? Okay, Mr. Nana is not here. Mr. Bracco? Ms. Cowart? I know she's trying. Ms. Hallisley?
I'm here.
Mr. Hurch?
I'm here.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm here.
Mr. Weir?
Here.
Can also notice that Richard Brown is here, if you should need him. Mr. Chair, so who we are missing? Is Mr. Vincent. Oh, I didn't call out Kathy. Ms. Janis Gavitch, you're present, correct?
I am here.
Okay, so we are missing Mr. Vincent, Mr. Watkins, Mr. Dasing. We know that Ms. Hayes will not be attending. Mr. Nana, Mr. Bracco, Mr. Cowart, I mean, Ms. Cowart. So, for regionals, Ms. Hallisley will be sitting in for Ms. Hayes. Mr. Hurch will be sitting in for Mr. Nana. Region five is unrepresented.
Copy that. All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll go ahead and move on to public comment.
Point of order, Madam Secretary, please note that the Region two rep is here.
I didn't get you?
You did not.
Because I already noted you is here because you're with the fabulous and not nail polish. Yes, Mr. McGee.
Absolutely fabulous.
Is here and fabulous.
There you go.
I don't know if you might have marked it already, but I don't believe you called Region one in the roll call.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's because I did that pre-roll call and kind of messed me up. So Mr. Chatterton is in fact present, as is Mr. Lamb.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anybody, has anybody not been called who's here? All right, if not, then we'll go ahead and roll into public comment. Ten minutes, two minutes each per speaker. Go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized.
I have a cell phone, how do I do that?
I would love to be recognized.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Hinkle go first, then Mr. Fishman. Mr. Hinkle, go ahead.
Thank you very much. For those who don't know, I'm former LNC Chair, 2010 to 2012. We started the project of buying an office building in Alexandria. And we obviously eventually did that. Couple of things that I don't know has been brought up in the past, but some of the reasons why we wanted to do this, of course, is have a presence in Washington DC, so we could do some lobbying in Congress. But probably has fallen short on its objective, but it is what it is. Item number two is, when you have a building like this, you have an asset. And when you have an asset, you can get loans. So for example, if we have an emergency for ballot access in New York or Illinois, we can borrow money based on the asset that we have. One of the things that suggested I heard is that the office basically has been remained vacant for the last two years. One of the questions I have is, why wasn't it rented out to another nonprofit? I don't know what the rental market is like for small office buildings like that, but I'm guessing four or $5,000 a month. So potentially $50,000 to $60,000 a year in income that should have been realized, but didn't wasn't. And I understand that the going price is about $650,000. When I believe we spent over $850,000, so in 10, 12 years, value of that property is declining by $200,000. I don't believe it not for a second. So obviously, I'm speaking very much in favor of keeping the building and opposed to selling it. And of course, there is the FEC requirements. And when I talked to Bill Hall, former Councilperson for the LNC, said absolutely no way, the only way you could sell that building is to buy another building or lease. So my two cents, I wish you, please do not get rid of the building. The David F. Nolan Building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle, and I will give an update on the building later on the call. And it should answer a lot of your questions and comments. Next up, Mr. Fishman, and then Mr. Sebeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also rise to address the building issue. In 2019, when I was Executive Director of the Libertarian Party, we were going through a financial crisis at the time. And I looked at all sorts of methods that we could make money, including which was renting out space in the building and possibly using funds that we raised into the building to invest and buy another building with the idea that we would be able to profit from that. Pursuits with lawyers and the FEC consulate said that is specifically not allowed. The LNC cannot profit from a building. If we rent out space in the building, we can only collect enough to cover our mortgage, but we could not profit from it. So to answer Mr. Hinkle's question, we couldn't have charged $4,000 a month because the mortgage, or rather, at this point in time, the property taxes are not equal to $4,000 a month. The reason the FEC has these rules is because it would be very easy to get around campaign finance restrictions, which limits a person's donation to the general fund to $41,000 right now. If you are allowed to buy and sell real estate, because I could buy a building and then sell it three years later at a profit of 1,000%. And that would allow a wealthy donor to suddenly contribute money well in excess of what they could have given to the party specifically. The FEC law is specific about that. You cannot profit from buildings. Money in the building fund must stay in the building fund. And I know that there's some thought, some talk about the fact that the money was collected, but put into the general fund. Prior to my being the Executive Director, we did not establish the segregated funds, but we earmarked all the donations in razor's edge. So the data is there as to who specifically gave stuff. Talking with Mr. Hinkle, and I also spoke with David Blau, who was the Secretary, when they started raising money that was gathered for the building fund was specifically solicited to go into the building fund. Whether it went into a segregated fund or not, the FEC requires a party to respect the wishes of the donor. So money that went into the building fund that people thought was going into the building fund must remain.
Mr. Chair, we're at time. Thank you, Mr. Malagon. And if you wouldn't mind keeping time for me, so I don't forget. Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Sebeck, two minutes, start us there.
Yes, thank you all. Appreciate this. I'm speaking to you as the former Chair of the Platform Committee, as well as a member of the previous Bylaws Committee. Would ask this, the LNC, putting this on record, to please pass the motion regarding the reappointment of the Bylaws Committee, which is up for discussion at this meeting. It is the intention of, from my understanding of Ms. Harlow's, to get the previous report for the Bylaws Committee be heard at the convention, because it was not heard in Washington. As speaking as the former Platform Committee Chair, I make a similar pledge for the Platform Committee, even though that's not up for discussion at this time. I feel that the work of those two committees needs, should be respected and honored. The delegates should have those proposals heard. And I think it's the best interest of the party, as well as for the membership to hear them, as well as to get our convention prep going in a fast manner for those areas. Just don't have to worry about so much about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sebeck. Is there anybody else seeking to speak for public comment? All right, if not, we'll go right into our first discussion, which is a Convention Oversight Committee update. Mr. Ford, you in the house?
Hold on a second. The, oh. Interestingly enough, I've just booked travel just a few minutes ago. On the 16th, I'll be going out to Grand Rapids for the first site tour. In which case, we're gonna have meetings set up with experienced Grand Rapids, as well as the hotel and as well as Convention Center. What's interesting about this area is the three groups that we're going to be dealing with are separate, but working closely in conjunction. So the first priority I have out there is we're going to be having discussions about an existing discount program that we are hoping to amplify and afford to convention attendees, which will offer discounted area restaurants, as well as attractions, as well as give a really finished look at the area, so that people attending the convention can save some money, but also utilize whatever time they have, particularly if they're doing it as a family vacation. We have entered into discussions about extending the number of hotel rooms. By definition, of course, that's confidential, but the facility is spectacular. And I'm drawing from pictures right now, but looking forward very much to having a, an aggressive business session followed by, and this is important, this will address some of Mr. Sebeck's concerns. Of course, I can't talk, speak to the staffing of the various committees. What I will say is that I've had conversations with Ms. Harlow's, who's seen fit to join us. At I think all of our Convention Oversight Committee meetings, we've had in-depth conversations about our bylaws and our reporting responsibilities, our purchasing responsibilities, and how we have to conduct ourselves. But we've also spoken to the priority of having platform and bylaws really lead off the convention. And we're going to be working aggressively to make sure that due respect is given to those committees' output as a priority in the convention. And that's not, that's not me taking shots at any of the former conventions. They were what they were, and things happened. But for Mr. Sebeck and anyone else's concerns, we will be focusing heavily on the business section of that. Now, we, the committee has been meeting every other week already. We've broken down into about four committees, IT, Speakers Committee, Logistics Committee, that's going to handle all the infrastructure needs, amongst other things. And we're already having conversations about the type of meals that we're going to be offering. We're talking about things like having a general meal plan. We're working on it. We're in early stages, but we're working on that. In addition to meals that will be conducted with speakers. So looking to make it as aggressively priced, reasonably affordable event as possible, offering people lots of, lots of events. We've also, and I'll just give a tease on this, because we're going to be meeting again this week, we've also started a committee to work on both the site of the 28 Convention, also, and I, I'm opening the can of worms, Mr. Chair, when I bring this up, but the committee has formed a working group that a number of folks are going to be involved in, some real legends in the party, Mr. Dasbach, Mr. Redpath is going to be joining us in our next meeting, Karen Harlow's, myself, and a few other people from the existing committee to talk about and analyze and investigate, dare I say, moving the presidential year earlier in the process. Now, this is, no decision's been made. The decision ultimately will be made if, you know, at the time, the LNC considers it. And we're at really the stage where we're starting to discuss the issues we need to discuss about moving the date up. And a lot of conversations already been had about everything from ballot access to logistics, to travel, to all of that. And so it's very much a blank slate right now. But I want to let the committee know and, and LNC members know that that is going to be a conversation. And I say that because this will be really the one time we've had a chance to do this now and in the near future. You know, the plans were made early on to have a conventional convention date, if you will, for DC. And so that opted us out of that. This is the one chance we have to do it, and we do it right. And we've already got kind of a, like I said, a lot of institutional experience already involved in the conversations to go over what the advantages might be, what the pitfalls may be. So that's a, that's a broad look. We will be having a site visit at the in-person LNC meeting in May of the facilities, because there really are facilities. There is a, at least based on pictures, and I'll be able to report more anecdotal to folks if they want to reach out to me. But it really, the hotel is beautiful. There are a number of great restaurant opportunities and, again, family activities within a close distance of the, the Convention Center itself is a full freestanding Convention Center with a theater attached. And there are adequate hotel spaces for all of us. So I, you know, I think we're off to a great start. Finally, the theme contest is up and running. And I would ask people to participate in that. We had a bunch of people weigh in with themes. And, you know, this is a great way to support the party and also take a hand in how we're going to represent ourselves in Grand Rapids. So, you know, I remain available to members and to officers and libertarians alike for input and conversations on this, how we're going to proceed. But we made a lot of progress in the first month or so, and it's run a war footing. We want this to be a profitable, highly focused event that speaks to liberty, but most importantly, speaks to the business of the party. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that update, Pat. Is there anything the committee needs from the LNC at this time?
The patience, patience is a virtue. You know, we're gonna be, we've got a lot to consider in the next few months. I would argue that the, the theme contest is sort of paramount. Now, get people involved. Now, we all know that it's, again, it's a fundraising tool, but it's fun and it'll engage people in something positive. And when we get that theme going, we will have merch available right away for people to, to get into the spirit of things. It seems like it's a long way out, but it's not. You know, we're, we're a year and a month. So it, we're going to be closely listening to people's concerns and issues, and we're going to do the very best we can. Like I said, we're off to a great start. Mr. McGee has already invested as a member of the committee. He's focusing on the, I'll put the word out, so he'll be the target. But he'll.
Thanks, Pat.
I'm here for you, buddy. But has already spent a great deal of time focusing on sites for 2028. So we've really got three tracks going on simultaneously. We've got, obviously, Grand Rapids. We've got the conversation about when to have presidential conventions. And then, of course, we've got the actual site selection for 28. So there's a lot to do. We're going to be staffing up the committee additionally as the year goes on. So, but right now, folks, if you can get out there and support that theme contest, that's good for everybody.
Awesome. Karen Anne?
I, yes, I had a question for Mr. Ford, and also if the committee didn't mind me adding two things, I'll add the two things in the beginning. I have already started assembling my teller team. Anyone who's listening who would like to serve again or serve for the first time, please get in touch with me. It's never too early to assemble that. And I spoke with one of the very experienced credentials committee people from last time to work on a manual for the credentials committee, because that's always really tough for people going in. But the question for Mr. Ford and Chair Nikala is, has there been further discussion on the tour since so much of the Convention Oversight Committee probably will not be able to be there on Friday? I'm trying to change my plans, but it all depends upon my employer.
So I'm talking to Hannah about that. She's working with the convention people to see if we can do this Saturday or Sunday and schedule some time for the whole LNC to do a tour. So we're waiting here back, and we're thinking Friday, we may do a social, so that's TBD. But probably Sunday, it's looking like. So either, either we'll do some, you know, Saturday or Sunday, but we should know next week.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, anybody else? Awesome. Well, thanks, Pat. Thanks, everybody that's on the COC for all your hard work, and I look forward to Grand Rapids and checking out the site. All right, next is Audit Committee update. Ms. Janis Gavitch?
Okay, hello everyone. As a reminder, the Audit Committee is composed of myself, Rich Bowen, and Doug Nebel. Mr. Bowen was elected Chair. We generally meet once a week and will continue to do so while the audit for 2024 is underway. The engagement letter was signed by the Chair to hire Lehman Flynn Valaro CPAs to conduct the 2024 audit. This is the same firm we used in last year for 2023. The audit's well underway and is proceeding smoothly. The Audit Committee met with the auditor to discuss the situation with the payments to Freedom Calls. As a result, he will be doing some additional testing related to Freedom Calls and some other vendor payments. And we hope to at least have a draft of the audit sometime in May. Anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay, Mr. Chair, do you want me to just go straight into the Kennedy Victory Fund update?
Yeah.
I don't mind, but there was, it was a little bit of a different order, but since Kathy's already on the mic, that's smoother. But we need, do need to go back to the COC Policy Manual update.
Oh.
Oh, that's weird, because it was, okay.
No, I think, go ahead and do that, because the Kennedy Victory Fund report will go nicely with the Treasury Financial Review right after it. So let's go back.
Okay. All right, cool. So next is the Delegate Allocations Update and Policy Manual Change, Ms. Harlow's?
No, the COC Policy Manual update, the delegate one was later.
Do I have the wrong version of this agenda?
I can put.
Number two.
Yeah, I can put it up on the screen. I'm trying to bring up the OneNote for some reason. The SharePoint is being a little slow right now. But the agenda, number two, was supposed to be the COC Policy Manual Change. So we're just going back to number two.
Okay.
And I know that Mr. Dasing just came in, so let me just, let me just mark him as present. I don't want highlight, but there's text. Okay, it was just. Why is it doing that one moment? There we go. Okay. I'll move it, and then I'll speak to it. If there is a second, I would move to amend Section 1.04 of the Policy Manual, which is the main title's Committee Scope and Responsibilities, but specifically subsection eight. I have the markup on the screen, so I'm only going to read the changed portions. It says, "The COC shall make recommendations for convention sites." I added "and" dates to make that clear. That kind of dovetails with what Mr. Ford said. That's always been understood, but it's better to be clear. Sorry, I'm speaking to it, to the LNC. But the LNC shall.
Real quick, a second to this?
Second.
I was making the, I was making the motion, but if there's a second right away, then that helps, because I can speak to it as I'm doing it. Then it says, "But the LNC shall choose the site." I made it consistent to say they'll, they'll choose both. Again, that's been the practice. It's just better to make it clear. And then moving on to number three, it says, "Recommend for approval by the Executive Committee or the LNC major elements such as contracts over $3,000." "The convention budget and the convention program," it used to say, "including keynote speakers." I would like to strike out keynote. "It has been our practice, there were some exceptions made last term that did cause controversy. We're not getting into that, just noting it." "But the convention before that, every single speaker was approved, including breakfast speakers, and even up to the end last term, every speaker was approved." So I think we need to strike out keynote. That's very subjective, and we don't want to be able to elude approval just by calling it something else. So speakers. And then number four, and it used, it said, "Ensure all contracts with vendors go through a transparent bidding process." There are some contracts that are insignificant. They could be a $500 contract. Do we really? I think, to me, I think the intent was always significant contracts, and since the LNC has to approve contracts over $3,000, that seemed like a natural number to have to go through a bidding process as well. Like if we engaged a photocopy vendor to do copies of the bylaws report, and it was 2,000, do we really need to run all over town and get bids for that? Now, maybe the LNC does, because that's what it says right now. But I think putting in a dollar value maximizes our time and ensures, though, that the important contracts go through a transparent bidding process. So that is the motion.
Thank you, Karen Anne. Mr. Malagon, are you recognized?
I, I'm ready for discussion. I assume it was, it was moved and seconded. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, I would just encourage my colleagues on the LNC to vote this down, particularly, I don't like the striking of keynote and the amount in regards to contracts and vendors and all of that. The EPCC is working closely with, well, I'm working with the Chair, Ms. Janis Gavitch, and also with the LNC Chair, Mr. Nikala, to put forward proposals for contracts and vendors and anyone that does any of that as a member of the EPCC. So I think this is within our purview. We'll be making these recommendations for, excuse me, for Grand Rapids. So I plan on voting this down, and I encourage the LNC to do the same. We're going to be making, recommending some changes. The three of us will be making some recommendations for changes toward the EPCC, then we can workshop it there. Name new people that are, thank you. Ms. Janis Gavitch, the LNC Chair, and I will be working to correct some anomalies and inconsistencies in the PM, at which point we will bring forward those recommendations to the EPCC for any additional recommendations or commentary, at which point we will, in a hopefully united front, present those recommendations to the LNC for Grand Rapids. This isn't something that needs to be done now. Thank you.
Ms. Janis Gavitch? You're all muted.
Muted.
You're muted, Kathy.
Okay, sorry, boomer. Ms. Harlow's, I'm wondering if you discuss this amount with the Executive Director, who has knowledge of the staff expenditures for the DC Convention?
I know, Ms. Janis Gavitch, but I can address, I think, some of that, I'm going to address in addressing Mr. Malagon's comments, but the direct answer to your question is no.
Okay, well, there were a number of printing and other expenditures that were over $3,000. Some of them were last minute, some of them were emergencies. So I'm not sure if you intend to cover all of those types of circumstances or just contracts that are negotiated with a paper contract. Like if we need printing for a binder, for the binders, we're not going to get a contract. We might shop around, but it's not going to be a contract. So I'm wondering if that is the type of thing you intend to cover in addition to contracts?
Ms. Janis Gavitch, I would go with the historical interpretation and the strict wording, it's written contracts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you wish to?
Yes, I would, but if anyone else wishes to speak before me, since I've already spoken.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I don't think vendors that are one-off for the convention, it's just my personal opinion, and of course, the LNC will decide, is an EPCC matter. Certainly continuing contracts are, such as fundraising contractors and the like, but you know, maybe it should be. That's maybe a discussion to be had. My initial opinion is no, and it's never, ever been that way. I think that would overly complicate things, and the fact is, if this doesn't get changed and it gets voted down, A, if it's the $3,000 thing that's the issue, then that should just be struck, because we just talked about changing dates, and that seemed desirable to the past LNC, which there's a lot of duplicate members here. So if some persons have problems with certain of the language, I would recommend amendment. I would vote against the amendments, but that seems the more proper way. But right now, it says all contracts with vendors. So anything we have a paper contract for, if it's relatively insignificant, we have to go through a transparent bidding process, and it seems to me it should be for significant. But to piggyback, I did run this through Mr. Ford as COC Chair, since this does have to do with the COC. I, I did give him the, the language ahead of time for any kind of objections.
Mr. Malagon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, we can, this can be easily skirted just by not having contracts for things. I don't think everything requires a bidding process. I mean, there are people that are knowledgeable about certain things and they can communicate and do this. Again, this is why the LNC Chair, Ms. Yena Scavitch, the EPCC Chair and I, we're going to workshop some of these inconsistencies all the way throughout. We don't need to put the cart before the horse. I think it's just more prudent. This doesn't need to happen now. I would encourage my colleagues to vote this down. Uh, we will be proposing recommendations that we can discuss ad nauseam in Grand Rapids if we need to. But this will go through proper channels, so that everyone that is knowledgeable in respects to this sort of stuff can make, you know, can make these recommendations and then bring it forward to the LNC, so it's not, you know, sloppy, for lack of a better way to put it. And so we're all in understanding, in, in understanding and agreement with how this should be put forward.
Mr. Ford, then Mr. Lamb, and then Ms. Yena Scavitch. Mr. Ford?
Um, I, Secretary Harless did have this conversation with me. I'm comfortable with the recommendation she's made. We've spent a great deal of time in the, in the first couple of meetings, if you will, focusing on oh, transparency, disclosures, and following procedure. Comfortable with our framework, and I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lamb, you still wish to speak?
No, withdrawn. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Ms. Yena Scavitch, do you still wish to speak?
No, thank you.
All right. Anybody else wish to just have a discussion? Uh, Mr. McGee?
Um, I, personally, I don't have any problem with what, any of the language in the motion. However, I do think it, it's, it's apparent to me that there needs to be more conversation between the COC and the EPCC before anything moves forward, so I would move to table the motion.
All right, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I have a point of order that's easily cured. A table is a motion that means you're going to, you intend to come back to it the same meeting if possible. It's for an emergency situation. I believe Mr. McGee intends to postpone indefinitely or postpone to a certain time, such as our May meeting.
Sorry, postpone until our May meeting.
All right. Motion to postpone until the May in-person meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bost. We'll go ahead and move on to a vote. Um, let me ask, is there any objection to table? There is objection? Okay. We'll go ahead into a roll call vote.
Hey, one moment. Let me get just a general template set up. Oh, I didn't mean to do that one.
That, that's the French pronunciation.
Yes, I meant the voting template. One moment. Duplicate. I'll rename it in a moment. I could fill on that top. So we're voting on postponing to the May meeting. Mr. Bost?
Yes.
Mr. Chatterton? Mr. Chatterton?
Sorry, pass.
Mr. Dar?
No.
Mr. Dasing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford? I'll come back to Mr. Ford.
Uh, I'll, we're voting right now, just to confirm, we're voting to postpone, if you will, the policy manual change. And if that is the case, I will say no.
I will vote no. Ms. Halasly?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Malagon?
Nay.
You're voting no?
Correct. I'd like this voted.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I just got confused. Uh, Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Hurch?
No.
Uh, one moment. Mr. Redpath?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Vincent, I don't know, have you arrived? Mr. Watkins, have you arrived? Ms. Yena Scavitch?
No.
Mr. Chair, it's two yes, ten no. Uh, no express abstentions. Do you wish to record?
I'll abstain.
Let me just rename this, so I don't get confused later. Okay?
All right, motion fails. We're now back onto the main motion and back on to discussion. Any further discussion on this motion? Going once, going twice, going three times. If not, we'll take it to a vote.
Okay. Sure, I do have that one set up. Just one moment. I would like to make this a little smaller, so y'all can see it better. Mr. Bost?
Pass.
Mr. Chatterton?
Pass.
And I think I skipped you last time, but your vote wouldn't have made a difference. I apologize. I did not come back to you. Do you want me to record a vote for you on that postponement?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Dar?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Dasing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Ms. Halasly?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Malagon?
Nay.
Mr. McGee?
Abstain.
Mr. Hurch?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
And I, since there's been no dings, Ms. Yena Scavitch?
No.
And was there a pass? Uh, Mr. Bost was a pass, and Mr. Chatterton was a pass, I believe.
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Chatterton?
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, it is eight to four. Uh, one express abstention. Your vote would make a difference, uh, because it requires two thirds for the policy manual change. Um, if you don't vote, it passes. If you vote no, it fails.
I'm an abstain.
Okay, eh, achieve the two thirds.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, now Ms. Yena Scavitch is back up.
Ms. Yena Scavitch?
Okay. Update on the Kennedy Victory Fund. The fund is in closeout mode. Pursuant to FEC rules, the fund, the fund could only stay open after the election to pay off debt. At this time, sufficient donations have been received to extinguish the debt. Accordingly, the fund is processing the final distribution to the participants and wrapping up final expenses. To date, the LNC's share of eighteen distributions total three hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred. We expect the final distribution on Wednesday, of which the LNC will receive approximately thirteen thousand, and that will be it. There will be no more, um, Ellen funds from the Kennedy Victory Fund after that. After, after the distribution, uh, the LNC's total share with the Kennedy Victory Fund will be around three hundred and seventy-three thousand. So the LNC has some closeout responsibilities after the final distribution is sent. And the participants send their final wires to the LNC's Restricted Joint Fundraising Committee Bank Account, which is separate from the gen, from our general operating account. And I've seen some misunderstanding out in social media about how all of this works. So just briefly, I don't want to take a lot of time here, but when we get, when the LNC gets a distribution from the Kennedy Victory Fund, it can be up to forty-one thousand, three hundred from each donor, if that donor has not previously donated to the LNC. Of that amount, ninety percent is wired into a Restricted Joint Fundraising Committee Account. And ten percent is ours, LNC, free and clear, goes into our general operating account. So once the final wires from the participants come back to the Joint Fundraising Account, then the LNC will pay the remaining Team Kennedy expenses. The LNC will have some final invoices to be paid from the Joint Fundraising Committee Account. We are going to, um, get a reimbursement it from, for, um, for our audit. Um, we're in discussions as to exactly how much of the audit they will pay. Our FEC consultant for any hours over and above, which she has spent for normal, um, LNC FEC work. And, um, our accounting firm, they keep time on additional, um, hours. We pay them by the hour, so anything over, uh, that, that is strictly Kennedy Victory Fund related, or even if it's mixed to some degree, um, we get reimbursement for, and occasionally there's, um, a couple of hours, um, of staff time per month. When all final Team Kennedy expenses are paid, the Joint Fundraising Bank Account will be closed. Uh, and, you know, I have seen some other misunderstandings about who directs the Joint Fundraising Committee Account. That is the account, I think it's the ninety percent of the distribution, both directly from the Kennedy Victory Fund and from the participants. While that is an LNC account, that we are the holders of that account. Pursuant to the contract, no one in LNC makes decisions to expend those funds. Those funds are paid at the direction of Team Kennedy. I know some people have been watching carefully all the FEC related filings, and they, you may have seen a um, updated statement of organization filed by the Kennedy Victory Fund a few days ago. That statement updated, uh, the list of participants to, um, include four of our participants who've been on the fund for a while. They just became FEC filers, so their new FEC numbers are, um, posted. These four states, uh, received funds from the Kennedy Victory Fund when they were not FEC filers. That is permissible under FEC rules. However, contractually with the Kennedy Victory Fund, they are required to send ninety percent of that distribution to the LNC's Restricted Joint Fundraising Committee, or, I'm sorry, Restricted Bank Account. That is not permitted by FEC rules. Accordingly, any transfers that were sent from those states to the LNC were returned to those states until they completed their process to register with the FEC. They have done that now, and now they will be able to transfer those funds back. We're hoping that all the, all the transfers and all the expenses will be, um, closed out in the next month. And I'll provide another update at the May Board Meeting, hopefully with final numbers. Does anyone have any questions on that, or anything about the Kennedy Victory Fund?
Just to reiterate, Ms. Yena Scavitch, what was the total number that was brought in?
So far, it's three hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred, and with our I'm estimating it'll be about thirteen thousand. It probably will be between eleven and fourteen. But it, we should end up with about, uh, around three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seventy-three thousand total from the Kennedy Victory Fund.
And the training wheels come off next Wednesday?
Correct, that's it. Yep.
So that's, that's the time we pull up our bootstraps and get to work, more so than we've already been.
Yes.
Any questions from Ms. Yena Scavitch? All right. Hearing none, thank you very much. Okay, perfect segue into our next topic, which is the financial review with our Treasurer, Mr. Redpath.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first of all, I sent out on, I believe, March thirty-one the February month-end financial statements. I sent them to the LNC Public List, which I thought would also be reflected on the, uh, Board List. Apparently it was not. Thank you to, um, uh, Kathy Yena Scavitch for sending it out to the Board List today. Uh, didn't, again, didn't realize, uh, that, uh, you guys didn't get that, but from now on, I'll send it to the Public List and the Board List at the same time. There is a short report with that, along with the actual financial statements. Be happy to address any questions. Uh, but I will, um, give an update right now as to, uh, sort of initial, uh, income statement report on, on March. And, uh, uh, and, uh, give a balance sheet update, uh, for, uh, April sixth. I went on to QuickBooks today to get, uh, updated balance sheet numbers. And, uh, Hannah Kennedy reports, the Executive, uh, Director reports that, uh, for the month of March, uh, basically that, uh, revenues totaled, uh, just a little shy of seventy thousand dollars. Uh, that would be ballpark forty-five thousand dollars of, 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 uh, general revenues and about, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars of, uh, Joint Fundraising Committee. So it's actually about forty-five, uh, forty-five-five on the, uh, regular LNC revenues, little over twenty-four thousand, the Joint Fundraising Committee. Uh, March revenue estimate right now, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars. Expenses were about forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, uh, revenue minus expenses for March right now. Ballpark twenty thousand dollars of net income in March of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, the current balance sheet situation, as of last Friday and as of today, uh, we have unrestricted cash right now of about two hundred four thousand dollars uh, in the PNC and Truist bank accounts. Uh, combination accounts payable and credit card debt right now sums to, uh, fifty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, so our, uh, cash situation is, um, uh, again, about two hundred four thousand unrestricted cash, accounts payable and credit cards about fifty-eight thousand dollars. There is a balance sheet item, uh, on Zoho, unprocessed checks. I would need to talk with the accountant. That is a credit balance, so it's sort of a negative forty thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars. Uh, so, uh, that might be an offset to cash, uh, there. So if that is, if that is an offset, offset to cash, then the cash position would be basically a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, rounded to the nearest thousand dollars. I've got to check on that. Uh, Hannah is out tomorrow, but I'm going to check with the accountant on that situation. So the, um, that's a summary of the current balance sheet situation, uh, for, for the LNC. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions before I give an update on fundraising? Ms. Yena Scavitch?
It's not a question, but I just want to highlight that our credit cards are down to around fifty-eight thousand from a hundred.
Yes. So we're working with credit card debt. Thank God. Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, do, do you know what sort of rate we have on the credit card?
Uh, it's in the uh double digits. I think it's uh, I can't tell you offhand, but I think it's like in the fourteen to sixteen percent ballpark.
Yeah, one of them is fourteen and the other one is sixteen.
Right, I think I knew it was in the fourteen sixteen percent area, yeah.
Okay, uh and I guess uh forgive my ignorance, is there a reason we can't throw some of the unrestricted cash at at that amount to to just erase it?
I I think we could do that. I'm I'll talk to Hannah Kennedy about that, but you know, I've said in the past that that, you know. I've communicated to her that we ought to make that a point of emphasis in terms of, you know, paying down that credit card debt. Uh, I have investigated uh lower credit card rates through loans. Uh, but I I I don't think that's really going to be feasible, but um I will speak with Hannah Kennedy about that.
And and I will say, and I'll let everybody speak to before I go on my diatribe, but we do have a bit of a shortfall. And so we want to keep that liquidity going for as long as possible, um especially until we can get the building sold and get the F E C. Uh, word back on, you know, how the money can be used and hopefully to pay off the credit card and some other things. But you know, to go through liquidity, I I we can throw a little bit at it at a time, but we don't want to throw a lump sum at it and lose twenty-five percent of our liquidity. Uh, overnight at this time until we get something shored up and and get some projects started and then I'll feel a lot more comfortable about it. But uh, we'll go down the list, um we'll go Yena Scavitch, Malagon, Karen Anne, uh Ms. Harlos, and then Mr. Thompson.
I I believe um Ms. Harlos, Mr. Malagon were in front of me.
Okay, then we'll go Malagon, Harlos. Yena Scavitch, Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to address Mr. Thompson's point, I suspect, given the last disperment dispersment, uh the email that I received two days ago. For California's disbursement regarding the K V F. Um, it was a fraction of what was anticipated and it's the last dispersment, so I don't think that we can, I I literally don't think that we have the money. The runway that we had initially projected, uh that was contingent on the payout from the K V F is no longer in play. So we I I we literally can't afford to pay off the credit card debt right now. It would have to be after the building is sold, which we'll talk about later. But uh, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that that would be the case or the reason why we can't do that now.
Ms. Harlos?
Yeah, comment and a and a question and the, I'm not a financial person, so I don't pretend to be. I don't play one on T V either. The it with the liquidity argument, however, could it be argued, and again, I could be completely off base. That that paying it off would save us the interest money, but we'd still have that credit limit. So if we ran into trouble, we could always charge, uh charge things on it. But at least between now and then, we wouldn't be paying the interest. Again, that could be off base, that's just a comment. Um, the second, the question I had, which may not be appropriate to answer right now. If you say so, Mr. Chair, I'll honor that, you know, maybe it needs to be executive session. How did our credit card get so high?
Apparently at some point, and I forget the exact point in time, someone gave instructions. Uh, to only pay the minimum payment on the credit card. And then it got really high. So now we have a really high credit card balance, um but yeah, we're working on rolling that back. I I hear you on, you know, paying it off to save money on interest. I'm I'm very interested in doing everything we can to save money. Uh, I I talked to Hannah about that a little bit more because there's certain things we can put on the credit card. That if we had to in an emergency, we can just use the credit card and there's certain things we won't be able to like staff salaries. If we get into a cash crunch, so that's the only consideration there. Um, but I'll I'll bring that up with her again to see where we're at. I really want to see, once the K V F dries up and give it another month to see. What is our net income on a predictable basis and any major expenses coming up to make sure that. You know, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot right away by paying off that balance because we may need to deploy that cash potentially. Um, but but I hear you on that. We did use the money from released from the. The, I believe it was the Michigan suit that ended last November. There was money held in escrow, twenty-five grand. We threw the credit card. Balance, we may be able to just start throwing ten grand a month at it, you know, just pay it down if worried about liquidity or, you know, some other strategy. But I I definitely want to get that down. I think Miss Scavitch is next.
Yes, I was um surprised, I had the same question about what what's on the credit card and. I've taken a look at it. There's nothing huge, a huge expenditure that that stands out. There are a lot of recurring expenses. That we have that are on credit cards because, you know, um that's just the the most efficient way to pay those. And when we had issues with um cash flow and leading into the the convention. There was a decision at that time not to pay, only to pay the minimum on the credit cards. I believe um hi- our executive director has been paying the minimum plus anything. That was charged during that month and that was really, you know. I was really hoping that we would have a decent first quarter separate and apart from the Kennedy Victory Fund money. I was hoping the last, um I actually I was expecting based on, you know, what I had heard from them. That the last um distribution was going to be fairly sizable and I was hoping that we would be able to pay it off. Just flat out pay it off with that, uh but you know, we have with the two two hundred and four in the bank. Our credit cards around fifty-eight, we have um some other um. Restricted funds, I'm, I don't mean that in the sense that um it it's. A full, um it's a commitment, it's not like restricted in the in the accounting sense. Of another two thousand dollars toward our legal retainer, so that's sixty thousand dollars. If we pay that right off the top from the two hundred and four, we're at a around a hundred and forty thousand. Now, March was a little better in terms of matching, um there wasn't as much of a discrepancy between. Our um general revenue and our our expenses. Uh, we were only, you know, uh four thousand six hundred, you know. In the whole. It makes me really nervous to to pay an additional amount right now. I was really hoping that we could. I want to get those things cleared up as as soon as possible, but we really need to project our income. Uh, it's our expenses, see what else we can cut. And I know the chair's going to talk about some of this and also um, you know, see how we can do with fundraising. If if the board all makes fundraising calls and brings money in, then you know, um. We will be able to pay those off.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, and then I'm going to go ahead. Mr. Thompson? Do you still want to speak?
You, yeah, I'm sorry, I I I was on mute, uh but just uh rest assured what I said while I was on mute was brilliant. Uh, Karen Anne kind of kind of made my same point, though. I was just going to say that. We would still, we would still have the liquidity, we just wouldn't have a fifteen percent interest rate. Uh, however, you you did bring up that we, there are some items maybe that we can't pay with a credit card that we would still need the cash on hand for. Uh, I don't I don't have your business experience, I I just have my my personal experience being debt-free. Uh, so the 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 Dave Ramsey part of my brain really wants to get rid of the of the guaranteed fifteen percent credit card debt.
No, I I hear you, I I agree. I'll I'll talk to, I'll I'll see if there's anything we can look at that we could put on the credit card if we had to. That we can project out and save the fifteen percent, but but as as Kathy mentioned, we're kind of in a bit of a holding pattern because. The reality of our income versus expenditures is is still a bit of a moving target right now and so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do do you know if there was a vote on only paying the minimum amount or was that a was that a unilateral thing?
I believe that was an executive decision.
So that was just an Angela thing?
Correct.
Okay.
With the treasurer, with the the treasurer recommended that.
Actually, yes, with the treasurer's input, yeah, so it wasn't, it was a bilateral decision, it was not a unilateral decision.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Ford, just really quick and I'm uh.
Briefly, on on the note, Karen Anne's point is valid. There's one wild card here. I read, um I I follow the banking industry. Uh, there is a growing trend, given the economy, bankers, bankers doing what they do, of credit lines being cut once they're paid. So be very, very careful because you could find yourself in a position, I'm not saying it's unique or anything we've done. But you could pay down your credit line all of a sudden with the anticipation of it being available and it might not be there anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. So so on that note, um I I don't think it's any secret that. The L N C, quite frankly, let's be blunt, has been shrinking. We've been shrinking in terms of members and we've been shrinking in terms of fundraising, probably for the past five, six years, maybe longer. The past quarter century, if you look at it at a on a long enough timeline. And um, you know, I'll go off the bat and say that uh in the la- in the past two months, I've been working with Hannah and staff to cut everything that's not nailed down. Um, we did hire uh Strategists Inc., Debbie Mason, she's the one who did our. Board training in August, she's excellent. Uh, we fundraised eighty-five hundred dollars mostly from the L N C. Uh, special shout out to L P California and Lars Mapstead also for contributing, but the bulk of the money did come from from the board. Uh, to hire her on to do an operational evaluation because oftentimes. The what loose ends you have in an organization, what you can streamline, how you can make the most out of your your paycheck, out of your money. You know, stretch every dollar, um you have to really be on the inside. So I've spent a lot of time working with staff, working with Hannah. Uh, just seeing how things operate and then Debbie's basically going to be going in, she's already working with staff, she's already doing a lot of different things. And she will be making some recommendations and giving a formal report to the L N C it uh pro- uh before the May meeting. So that's fantastic. Uh, we still are looking to to make cuts. We're still looking to make room for someone to work on fundraising. Uh, we've cut labor to a degree, that's staff hours. I uh also uh spoke with uh Mr. Heiss and we've decided that uh we made a mutual decision to. Part ways and so his last day is today and will be not be renewing. Um, and we're doing everything we can to basically cut down and still be a skeleton crew and do as much as possible with what we have. But that's not enough. We have to grow and we have to actively fundraise, so. Over the past month and a half or so, uh Paul Darn and I have been meeting with uh Jim Bobka. Uh, Jim Bobka works for Mr. Ruffer, Chris Ruffer. And uh Jim Bobka was vital in Project Archimedes, which was the. Late nineties, early two thousands L N C um program to get new members uh joining the Libertarian Party. And so what they did is they took lists, they made excellent copy for lists and they sent out mailers. Back then, that was pretty much the only thing that you could do and they were able to get thirty thousand libertarians. These are party members, um and about three million dollars, it was about a hundred dollars per member. If we would have been growing five, ten percent a year, you know, over the past twenty-five years, we would be. I don't know, twenty, twenty-five million dollars a year, which is where we should be, but instead, if you look at the charts, we've done this. We've gone down and down and down over the years. And I think a part of that reason is never, we've never really had a serious membership program or fundraising program. And until very recently, we've never made fundraising or uh membership growth a priority. So I'm here to tell you today that uh not only did the L N C meet previously, just about a week or two ago. And um reaffirm that our new commitment now is our number one commitment is membership and growth. Um, which is tied to fundraising and we'll also be implementing in Archimedes two point O program. We're going to be uh seriously dedicated uh to finding new members and having them join the Libertarian National Committee, having them join the party. Um, and I think a rising tide raises all ships, so they'll be joining estate affiliates and they'll be joining, you know, becoming candidates and. Members and future leaders of this party because that's what we need to grow. And so I've been talking to staff uh for a while about implementing this. I've been talking with uh Mr. Bobka. I had a conversation with uh uh Steve Dasbach, who was chair during that period. We also spoke with Perry Willis, who did, who was a part of the project. He also wrote the copy for the project and we'll be in uh working with him again to do a copy for it. Uh, in this new reiteration and the idea is that we have data. And we know who's registered libertarian in the United States and most states. Uh, so we're going to be looking at what's low hanging fruit, going after people through social media. Uh, paying Meta, paying Google, whatever for targeted ads, embedding cookies, following them around wherever they go, upending the data, making sure it's accurate. Um, and and encouraging them to join the Libertarian Party. Um, you know, encouraging them to become recurring members, get that five dollar a month donor, that's sixty bucks a year, ten dollar a month donors, hundred and twenty dollars a year. Or even at least a, the very least a one-time member, uh going through our email lists. Getting new uh email lists and and, you know, forwarding to people, encouraging them to join. We're exploring text messaging, we're exploring direct mail, figuring out which demographics work, people who donate by check, people who. Are over a certain age bracket in a certain tax range, um you know, who who are the best people to. To target and what are the best methods to communicate with them to have them join the L P? So that's basically the program. Uh, staff's aligned, uh we've got a lot of smart people, both on the board and off the board that we're working with to get this into motion. Uh, Mr. Ruffer is very interested in the program and he'll be meeting us in Grand Rapids. Uh, this couple coming meeting to speak a little bit more about that and some of his vision for the party. And uh I I think this is very exciting and and very relevant and it's the the number one most important thing we need to work on. Um, we're going to be starting with the Florida state data because it's readily accessible. And also I know my people, I know Floridians, there's about forty-two thousand registered libertarians in the state of Florida. These are people that already are calling themselves libertarian, they know the Libertarian Party exists, but they're not members. And so if we can go after these people, figure out what works, get them to join the party. And then take that same model and expand it across all fifty states. Uh, this ties in with the joint membership program, so if we're targeting your state, your data. Going after members for you that hopefully join up in your state party. If you join onto the joint membership program, then when they join the national party, then they can also join the state party. And hopefully do a split donation and you get that data as well. Um, but ultimately, we need to grow because if we're not growing, we're dying. And so, in my opinion, this is uh the most surefire thing we can do. We've done it in the past. We're bringing it into the twenty-first century and we're doing it a bit differently. Um, I'm very excited about this, staff's very excited about this, members of the board that I've spoken to seem very excited about this. Um, we're also doing a board phone making program. We all have lists of people we're going to be contacting. I'm fully expecting the board to give or get, so either get on the phone for a few hours a month, minimum. And start making phone calls, introducing yourselves. A lot of you guys are region reps, so you know, you have a an interest in calling out to your region and. And and introducing yourself or reintroducing yourself to people. Um, and getting them to to up their donation or join the party or say thank you for donating, wherever the case may be. And eventually we'll be rolling that out uh to to volunteers at some point, once we have the program finalized. Uh, so this is an all hands on deck operation. I've got a few contracts out uh for some phone fundraisers to make phone calls. Uh, Larry Sharp is is one of those individuals who I'm I'm working with to uh to get him on the phone and to to help assist us. And um and we are looking for a paid fundraiser to join staff, either on a part-time or full-time basis. And so this is one of those snowballs that we need and get into that upward spiral. If we have money, we can do things. So if we've got more and more money we can count on, we can do things. Right now, we don't know. You know, with with precision, what our monthly income is going to be. So month to month, we could count on a fifty thousand dollar month and get a forty thousand dollar month. We could count on a, you know, you can't count on the K F V anymore, so the the this the training wheels are off. So this is extremely important. This is probably the most important thing. Uh, and once we get these systems down, then we're looking really good. So uh I've already talked to Hannah Kennedy, we basically are retooling staff to focus primarily on fundraising and membership growth. So everything that we're doing is being realigned in that direction. Obviously, they still have to do certain things they need to do to keep the lights on and keep things moving. Um, but that is the direction that we're heading. Anything extracurricular to this mission, we're putting on the back burner. Or we're just not focusing on right now. Um, obviously, we still have C O C, we still have P D R, we still have Defend the Guard, but primarily. What I want this board doing and I want staff doing is focusing on our membership and growth. And so, you're going to see a little more about Archimedes. You're going to see a little more about Archimedes in the future, but, uh, but this Archimedes two point O project, it's well underway. Um, we've sent out F R Ps to several social media companies. Uh, Matt Johnson is one of them, he's a board member, he does have a company. And, uh, we are doing this in a completely transparent progress. Maybe we pick Matt's company, maybe we pick somebody else, we've got it for, uh, for about three or four companies. So everything's being done in the sunshine and transparently, uh, there. And then we already have the data, we're using data services to upend the data, make sure it's completely accurate. So that we get good leads, that we can, don't get marked as spam, we can accurately target people. Um, and that goes into the emails as well. Uh, same thing with the texting, it has to be very accurate information and, um, and so on and so forth, so. That's normal. If anybody's got any questions or comments, we'll go ahead and start Karen Anne.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wanted to let you know that I'm thrilled that you're taking this up. Um, Steve Dasbach will tell you that ever since I learned about Archimedes, um, I had been fascinated by it. And Perry Willis is fantastic as well. So, um, I'm really glad that you're, you're, you're picking this back up because I, I. I do think, as they said, it's the lever that will, that will move our membership and, and Steve will testify to this, that I've been. I, I think I've been as fascinated with Archimedes as, as he has been and I don't think his original vision was ever given. Enough time to bloom. And if it had been, the LP would be in a much different place today. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Dar.
Yeah, so I'm extremely excited about this program. I came into the LP. Back when Steve Dasbach was, was running this program, it was a great time of growth. Um, love that we now have the, um, ability to use ma- modern data tools. To actually, uh, make this so much more effective. They were constrained by the technology of the time there. Um, and as I look back at how the growth of the party, we've been living off of that growth for so long in the party here. And, um, excited we'll be able to grow the party again, um, under that program.
And I just want to say, Paul has been on every single call with me, with, uh, with Jim and, and others to make this happen. He's actually the one that got the lead for. For getting this going, so thank you, Paul. Uh, we've been working hand in hand for the past two months. Uh, we talk every single day. Uh, pretty much, um, and I know we're putting in a lot of hours to, to get this started and to get things streamlined, so. Um, so shout out to, to Paul Dar. Anybody else? Anybody else have anything to discuss on this or anything else related? Alright, cool. And, uh, just to the L N C is we are to be putting together. At least one, maybe two, uh, phone banking trainings, uh, to get the L N C started on phone banking. So that's, that's in the works, it's going to be happening very soon and I'm very excited about that also. Alright, awesome. Uh, Investing Torre Committee update, Mr. Dar.
Okay, this is fairly straightforward. The Investor Committee has been working for quite some time. On the specifics of what's going on, uh, there that we are directed to work on. Um. The members of the committee are on the lp.org site. I am currently the chair of the committee and Ben Ware is the secretary. Um, as far as some highlights of some of the work that has been going on so far, we've had, uh, weekly meetings. Uh, we've met formally seven times over this, the course of this time. We've conducted seven interviews with different interview, uh, individuals. Um, concerning knowledge that, uh, some of them, you know, went over an hour in time, some less. We've conducted another estimated sixty hours of reviews of financial records, call records, email records and other documentation. And we've met with legal counsel once and we'll have counsel review the report prior to distribution to the L N C. The committee is working at a still steady deliberate pace and is expecting to have a full report completed. On or before the main L N C meeting, so that information is forthcoming. Um, we have been just steadily working on it. Unfortunately, as membership keeps asking us questions, um, as far as professionalism as a committee. We aren't really able to say the specifics of what's going on in the investigation so far, other than, um, we have been working consistently, uh, on it. At this time. Um, are there any questions?
Uh, I can't seem to raise my hand.
Okay.
Uh, so just, I have on the screen for everyone, the report that you sent me. Thank you very much, Mr. Dar. And also members can, can find this at, on, on the one note. So it said that you're expected to have a full report completed on or before the May meeting?
That, that is our current projection, yes.
And just something I'd like to point out for, for members, because I've been getting questions, um, there are non-L N C members. On the committee, um, because I've seen some people say that the committee is just L N C members. And the members are, are listed up on the screen if anyone, um, is curious.
Yes, thank you very much for showing the report. I gave a, a brief one-page report with all those highlights that I just read off. And you can tell anyone that doesn't have an lp.org email is one of our non-L N C members on the committee.
Alright, any other questions? If not, very much, Mr. Dar. And, um. Humor me, I'd like to give one clarification. Um, is someone messaging me? Let me clarify. The L N C has tried in the past to make fundraising and membership a priority. Um, we've had people really working very hard on it, but this is the first time in my memory we've ever actually needed a goal. And when I say a goal, I mean the whole board voting on it and making it literally a priority in terms of. We're setting a goal, we're voting on a goal, these are our priorities ranked, boom, 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 like this is what we're going after. So. Not to disparage past L N Cs for taking, you know, not making it a number one priority or whatever. Just saying this is the first time we've actually, you know, really formalized it as a real priority and done something like this. So. In any case, um, update on building fund research. And that is.
That was, uh, me, uh, uh, Karen Akala, because I was hoping, Ms. Janis Skavitch had asked me in the past, there was. Uh, a building committee and that was mentioned in a set of minutes. And I was really scram- wanting to find that report for the L N C since she asked me for it. Um, but just for everyone's reference, if anyone wants to read it, I did go through all of the minutes. Um, up until the time that we, we, we purchased the building, there are links in the one note if you, anyone. Needs light reading. Um, it was the November, uh, excuse me, yeah, November, uh, twenty-ten meeting though. That had the, um, most information on it, but however, I was at storage today and unfortunately. There was not a binder for that November twenty-ten meeting that had that key report in it. Uh, it just isn't there. Um, I spoke with Mr. Hinkle earlier, who is going to look to see if perhaps he has it. I'm going to get in touch with Mr. Neil, because these were all people who were involved at the time, who may have a copy. And I'm also going to re- reach out to Alicia Matson to see if she has a copy. Just so that the committee has as much information, but unfortunately it was not in storage. And that was it.
Alright, thank you Karen Anne. Any questions on this item? Alright, hearing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is, and I'll, we'll hand the gavel off to Mr. Dar. I, uh, moved to authorize up to sixteen thousand dollars for HQ roof repairs. Is there a second?
Yeah, is there a second?
Did someone second?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll speak to my motion, um, and bring everybody up to speed on what's actually happening with the building. Because I feel like it's one giant game of telephone and I don't think anybody really knows what's going on. So. Um, we had an offer from our neighbors, uh, to, that they were going to purchase the building for six fifty. And, uh, their G C put out about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we got to fix this and this and this and this and this. And I said, look, I want an itemized list of, you know, what every single item is for. Um, and then we're going to get our own quotes, so we're going to compare these quotes and we're going to see, you know, what, what the real damages are. Because personally, as somebody who's, you know, who's done this kind of stuff before with remodels and. And, and repairs and whatnot and acquisitions, I know, I, I don't think we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in damages. Uh, we actually had the building appraised for eight forty market value. So, we went out, we got our own bids. Um, we had a couple roofing quotes come in, we've had some drywall quotes come in, we had some other repair quotes come in. And, um, and we're, I am still talking to our neighbor and, and we're, we're going to see if we can work out some kind of deal potentially. Uh, it's been a little hot and cold and I think now they're, it seems like they're very interested and they know that we're, we're not willing to budge for what they wanted. Um, I've also employed, um, Mike Porter with Tartan Properties as a listing agent. So I, I feel that we can get somewhere between eight or eight fifty for the building. Uh, I think we can net between seven fifty and eight hundred thousand for HQ. Uh, and, and I believe if we do some of the necessary repairs on our end, uh, we can save a lot of money in lowballing. From, uh, from some of the buyers and we do have to do some of these fixes before we, before we list it. So this, the plan is here. Is, uh, to get the maximum amount of money out of this building. And I know some folks, they, you know, there's the whole, what are we going to do with the building fund? And I understand that we do have an F E C, uh, opinion request out that we're waiting to hear back on. The plan is to put this money into a high-yield savings account or some kind of account, uh, in order to, you know, maximize the, the gains once we do sell the building. And regardless of anybody's opinions on whether we should buy a new building or, you know, use the money for certain purposes. I will tell you that at this moment, we have no staff in the District of Columbia or Virginia area. Um, five or six years ago, we used to have a lot of people in the area showing up to the office. It was a very. Electric, I'll say, atmosphere in the office, we had people coming in, it was really great. And about a year, year and a half ago. Uh, the last person in the office, we did end up, uh, outsourcing that work and he is no longer with the organization. And so at this point, it's, it's vacant. Um, one of our neighbors used it for storage and we got a little income on that. Uh, we do have some equipment in there, we've got a printer that's worth some money and some other stuff that might be worth some money that we're looking to sell. But the reality is, we live in twenty twenty-five. Um, everybody that we employ works remotely. Uh, some of them are Texas, some of them are California, some of them are in the northeast. Well, the new people we hire will more than likely not be in DC. Uh, if we wanted to move everybody to DC, we'd have to pay them more money because DC is very high cost of living area. And, uh, they'd have to be willing to uproot their lives and move to DC just to be in a building. I, the arguments for being in DC, I think it was three arguments. I think one was prestige, which I understand that argument. Two is that we'd have a home base for lobbyists. We've never employed a lobbyist, at least not one that used our building as HQ, they usually already have their own office. And three was to use the press pass. We paid about two grand a year for many years and we've never used a press pass, not even once, to my, to my understanding. So at this point, we have no use for the office space. Um, even if we did want to use an office space in DC, we would want a more modern office space, which is a single-story. You know, floor, square footage, floor plan instead of three, three stories on top of each other. And so, you know, regardless of, you know, the opinion of keeping it, selling it or reusing it. I think, I think in, in my professional opinion, we, we need to sell this building, it, it is a liability. Um, anytime you own an asset like a building, it's a liability unless you're using it as an asset and we're not using it as an asset at the moment. So, um, with that in mind, uh, I did put out a few bids for the roof. Um, there was some rumors circulating, we had a twenty-year warranty on the roof. I called Alexander Roofing Company, which is the original roofers that did the roof in oh nine. It was a ten-year warranty because it's a flattened roof, it's a membrane, so that expired in twenty nineteen. We spent about three grand patching it in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one or around there, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, it's been around three grand. Um, and, uh, it is currently out of warranty. So I asked them how much it would cost to repair. They said it's too far gone to repair, you have to replace it. They came back with about thirteen-five. And that's when I originally asked for the sixteen thousand, is to get a little cushion in there just in case. Uh, we did find another roofing company that's willing to do it for around eleven thousand. So we're more than likely going to go with them and their scope of work looks a lot better. Um, for the drywall repair, we're probably looking about fifty-five hundred for Liberty Painting. And, uh, so they're going to do the drywall repair and the paint, and then we have a few other repairs that we need to, to factor in. So I'm hoping we stay around twenty grand, you know, I hope we don't go much higher than that in repairs. Now, the good thing is, is that, you know. These are, you know, the building can, once we sell it, can reimburse us for these repair costs. Um, so, you know, because these are building fund expenses, or at least go back into that fund. Um, but, uh, the plan is, I'm still working with the neighbor to see if they're willing to come up on the price. So I'm hearing, you know, I'm, I'm not going to budge. If we're going to do the repairs, then we're going to sell it for eight forty. If not, then, um, we're going to list it and we're going to see what bikes we get in the, in the area. Uh, I will say, things are a little weird in DC right now, as far as. The fluctuations and policy and whether people are staying or getting cut. And organizations aren't getting, you know, which is great from a libertarian perspective, but it also puts us in an interesting respect, uh, situation when it comes to. Selling the, the headquarters and, you know, what the prospective buyers are out there. But it only takes one buyer, we're going to do all of our due diligence, we're going to go through all of our fiduciary. Um, uh, procedures and duties to, to make sure we get as much money as possible, um, from HQ. And I want to sell this thing for eight forty. And, you know, we're not going to pay cap gains because I don't think we'd get more than eight forty for it, or I put a little bit of money into it. Um, and by the time we deal with costs and fees, you know, I'd like to see us net as much money as possible. So that's where we're at. It'll be nice to have that liquidity and then we can decide what we want to do with it later. If we want to get a. You know, I don't know, we, we'd have to discuss it as a board in the future, what we'd actually need to use this space for, if we got a space, how much we want to invest in that. Yada, yada, yada. But this is step number one, is getting this sucker repaired and then sold and then. Figuring out the F E C, what we can do and all that fun stuff later. But, uh, but I, I think this needs to go. So that's the motion. Um, we won't be spending sixteen thousand, hopefully be closer to the, uh, the ten thousand I mentioned before. And that's the motion. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Not seeing any hands raised for questions? Oh, now I am.
Was it seconded?
Yes, it was.
Yes. Mr. Chatterton.
Um, my understanding is there's still some potential for undiscovered issues that could be uncovered during the process of, of drywall painting. That could have additional costs. Um, is that correct or not?
Well, I mean, you know, they're gonna, we, we've got one more quote to see if there's anything, you know, in there we need to, to take care of. Um, if you look at the G C's quote, I mean, they're, the way they listed it, it was like roofing, drywall. Um, carpet and mold and then some other stuff and it wasn't itemized. And so, you know, just judging by the, the quote from the roof, I mean, if, I just, I just don't see what world. That we're looking at one fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I mean, they were going to offer six hundred. At one point, so is it a quarter million dollars in damage? I don't think it's that bad. Um, I mean, I've, I've dealt with a lot of. Uh, roof issues down here in Florida and we get a lot of rain, Carolina's due too, but we get a lot of rain in Florida. And having to patch that up and take care of it. And I think most issues we're going to have are going to be, you know, in the ductwork. And then, you know, we're going to wait for the, once you get a few other quotes, then we should have a better idea. So if that's the case, we should know. Um, what the extents are and what the repairs are going to be for everything. So I'm pretty confident we can get our prices.
So I've, um, I've had some experience dealing with, with leaks and, and mold in the past. Um, house I lived in when I was in high school had a flood while we were out of town and, um. Mold got into the ductwork and things like that. And I just want to caution that those kind of costs for that kind of remediation can absolutely explode. Um, we ended up having to move out of a home for over a year. Um, to remediate such issues, uh, when I was growing up. So I would generally be opposed to starting such repairs. Before we've had it fully assessed and know what that potential liability is, as I see that. Our most reasonable path is going to be one of either, don't fix anything and sell it as is, or fix everything and sell it completely. Our most reasonable path is gonna be one of either, don't fix anything and sell it as is or fix everything and sell it completely repaired. And I think if we are still not sure about what the potential liability is for repairs, I think it would be unwise given our issues with liquidity. Um, I think we should be waiting to dive into such repairs until we know the full scope of that. So I would be speaking in opposition to starting. Um, expenditures towards repairs while we're still learning more about potential damages.
We're gonna wait for the full quote for mediation before we move forward on anything. Because if they come back with some crazy high number, then. You know, then, then we're back to negotiating table essentially. But uh, but if it's a number that makes sense, then um, you know, then we can handle it and then, you know, get a lot more money out of it if we do it ourselves. So it's gonna depend on what those numbers come back at. So I did talk to Hannah about this. We're gonna do it in order to make sure that we know the full scope.
I believe Mr. Weir's next.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak um, to my professional experience as a project estimator. I've done all kinds of construction work. Um, I've, I've made it my livelihood and I do think that this is a very reasonable request. Um, and I think that this is definitely what's in the best interest of the LNC. Moving forward, if we're planning to sell the building to get the most out of our asset in the sale. Um, and I, I mean, I can speak more to that to people offline if they're really uh, interested in that, but I, I. Cannot speak more favorably, favor, more in favor of this and um, I would like to. Um, I guess at that point, I'll just, I'm gonna call the question on this as well.
I, an alternate can't call the question.
I'll call the question.
But I had my hand up. You can't.
I, I, I think this will be disposed of quickest if we just go to Ms. Harlow's next here.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, to, uh, uh, I'm hoping to change Mr. Chatterton's mind. Um, I too have had a lot of experience with mold in my profession within insurance defense. And I totally hear you, like, you can get into these things and they can blow up on you. But one thing you always have to do is get rid of the source of water. Because it will only get worse. So it can be bad now and it can explode on us. But it will explode even further if you don't stop the water intrusion. You, you, that's just number one. You always have to stop the water intrusion. So um. Yeah, so fixing the roof repairs, I think is wise and then we can decide what other repairs we're going to do. But dampness will only get worse the longer you let the water get in.
And I am not seeing any other speakers in the queue, so I believe we can now move to a vote on the question.
One moment. Is this, is there objection? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
That's a good question. That, that's a good question. Is there, I presume so. So um, is there any objection to the motion on, on the floor?
I object.
Thought so. All right, we'll now move to a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Bost.
No.
Mr. Chatterton?
No.
Miss, uh, skip you, Mr. Dasing.
No.
Mr. Ford?
No.
I will vote yes. Ms. Halassee?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Malagon?
Aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Hurch?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Yana Scabich?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dar, the vote is nine, five to zero.
Um, my vote doesn't matter on this one, correct?
Correct, and I normally will just put down an abstain if you don't vote.
I would just abstain in this case then.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go ahead and take back the gavel. And we will move on to. Bylaws committee reapportments, Ms. Harlow's.
Yeah, one moment. Let me just finish typing. Okay, I'll make the motion and see if there's a second and then I will speak to it. Um, the motion is somewhat long. In light of the eighteen months of work put in by the past bylaws committee and the fact that their report was not heard. Move that the secretary make inquiry of lost terms by law committee regular members, not alternates. And if any wish to serve again, that they be automatically, that should say. Um, reappointed by the LNC. I'm sorry, I worded that a little sloppily, reappointed by the LNC. Any open seats will be filled through an application process at our May meeting. And then there was, just for reference, here were the members appointed by the LNC at the end, because we had a resignation. Sylvia Arrowood, Paul Bracco, Nicholas Sazelski, Karen Anne Harlow's, Rob Latham. Frank Martin, Chuck Moulton, Tom Rolet, Mike Ruffo and Michael Seback.
Second.
Okay, um. This committee, this bylaws committee started the January before. The twenty twenty-four convention. And met every other Thursday for that entire time, for hours and hours and hours of work. Um, I do believe it's to respect the work of the volunteers that. They get to have their proposals heard. I can't speak for everyone on this committee. But I've spent enough time with them to know that I believe the vast majority of them. Would meet and say, we're just gonna present the report we already prepared, though if. Something urgent came up that somebody found some weird thing in the bylaws, I suppose they could consider another amendment. But I think that they probably will go, yep, no, it's the report that everyone has seen already and has had. Adequate time to um, review, maybe make some, make some tweaks. Uh, that's all I, I'll reserve to speak a second time, but that's all I have this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Harlow's. Mr. Malagon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would urge the LNC to vote this down. Uh, Ms. Harlow's, Dr. Moulton and Mr. Seback should not be anywhere near the bylaws committee or any other committee. I'm sorry that they didn't get a chance to present the report. There were other.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order that there should not be personal attacks.
Dude, it's not a personal attack. I'm just giving my opinion on this motion that you made, which I made on the public list and I'm allowed to do that during discussion.
I would still raise my point of order to the chair and.
Sir, I've been interrupted while I'm speaking by the secretary. I'd like to finish my point if I may.
I'm not sure what the point of orders.
I'd like to finish just my point here.
I'm allowed to interrupt with a point of order and explain to the chair.
We've spoken for ninety percent of this meeting. Can other people speak? Is it really that hard?
Let's come to order, come on. Um, let's just let Mr. Malagon finish. Let's just make sure we keep it clean. Let's not talk about each other, whatever. All right.
Thank you. So again, as I was saying, Ms. Harlow's, Dr. Moulton and Mr. Seback should not be on the bylaws committee or any other committee. I'm sorry that the committee didn't get to present the report, uh, such is life. I would gladly vote for the rest of the members should they choose to apply to the bylaws committee. Uh, and I would lobby for them, uh, should they want to present what they presented in the past or do something new, whatever. But um, given circumstances surrounding lawsuits and JC decisions and. Everything surrounding the removal of the secretary with Dr. Moulton representing her. I really just think it's very poor form for us to just like forget that the last few months didn't happen and I would urge the LNC to vote this down. And with that, I will call the question.
There's a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
McGee.
McGee. All right, we're gonna have to vote on ending discussion.
One moment, let me just set up a ballot. And hold on, I wanna remove my hand. I, I've been doing it through a shortcut key. There we go. Okay, one moment. Oh God, I did it. I did the same dumb thing again. One moment. I need the LNC, not ballot template. Voting template. Okay, well, we'll call it, call the question two. Mr. Bost.
I'm sorry, I can't find me. Can you clarify this specific vote?
Mr. Chair.
Are we calling the question or?
Th- this is a vote on uh, calling the question and then it would move on over. This isn't the vote.
Yes, to call the question. Yes, to call the question.
Mr. Chatterton?
Yes, to call the question.
Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dasing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
I'll abstain.
I will pass. Ms. Halassee?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Malagon?
Aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Hurch?
No, several others have had their hands up.
Mr. Redpath?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Miss, oh, sorry, I meant to do those. Ms. Uh, Yana Scabich?
Yes.
Okay, we had some passes. Um, who, one, one moment here. I will vote no. I don't think there was any other passes. Um, Mr. Chair, it's eight to four to one. Your vote will make a difference in the same way the other one.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so it does get to two-thirds.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to a vote.
One moment. One second here. Mr. Bost?
No.
You got a lot of background noise, Mr. Bost. Uh, Mr. Chatterton?
No.
One second. Why won't it go? Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dasing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Oh.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Ms. Halassee?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Malagon?
Nay.
Mr. McGee?
Nay.
Mr. Hurch?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Yana Scabich?
No.
Was there, Mr. Ford, did you pass?
For the sake of argument, could you just go through the vote again, through, I was not through the vote, through the motion again. Right now, if you vote. No, you are voting against reappointing.
The ones who wish to serve.
Okay, um. My silence on this should speak volumes. Be great to actually debate a motion for once instead of jumping to it. However, I'm going to vote no.
Hey, Mr. Chair, your vote will not make a difference.
I'll abstain.
One moment.
Assuming we could take care of appointments um, through email at some point. Probably make that motion on the list, take care of it before Grand Rapids.
We discussed this last meeting, I believe, where I'm gonna be making a list for you with the applications and emails will go out. The email for the IS committee had already gone out and then I had emailed you for all of, there's, there's multiple committees that need applications.
Mr. Chair, you need to actually announce the results of that vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said failed. Uh, motion fails. Next, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is delegate allocations, update and policy manual change. Ms. Harlow's. And then, Mr., you still have your hand up? Do you have anything?
Mr. Brown, you still have your hand up?
I think it was an artifact.
Okay, I'd like to do the update first, which will explain the reason for the policy manual change. Normally, um. So there's a, there's a bylaws, uh, bylaw, excuse, no, excuse me, a policy manual provision. That gives certain timeframes for the secretary to send out to the affiliates. Uh, the numbers that are intended to be used to apply the formula in the bylaws for how many delegates are gotten per. The presidential vote totals. Um, at least for me in the past, that's been uncontroversial. Um, nobody has ever challenged the numbers. It's from the FEC site. Now, the numbers per se are not being challenged this time.
Really sorry, but you're gonna need a second to speak to your motion.
Oh, I, I had noted an update first and I'm updating about a challenge I received.
Okay.
And then I was going to make a motion. But with this part, isn't the motion?
When the worker, Mr. Chair, if she's gonna, if there's no second for this motion, then we don't need to discuss it.
I haven't.
Paid or not, I mean, I don't understand.
It's a, it's a weird way to do it, but. Time limit on this, ten minutes? Fifteen minutes? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll allow the update.
Thank you. Um, so there's a situation in Tennessee where our ticket did not appear on the ballot. But party members wrote him in. Uh, the state of Tennessee does not count write-ins. Um, and I received a, some challenges from some party members. Who um, are certifying that they wrote in the name and they would like their write-ins. To count towards Tennessee's um, totals. Uh, and I spoke with the Chair of Tennessee. He didn't object to these, object to these challenges. Um, and he in fact sent another one my way. I, Dr. Moulton sent me how this happened one time in the past. And the write-ins, as long as the party members were willing to certify that they wrote in and a state that doesn't count them. Were counted by former Secretary Bob Solentrop. And so I went to look on how we resolve this and it seems to rest authority entirely with the secretary. I'm not comfortable with that, though if that's what the LNC wishes to do, they certainly can. I would like this authority to rest with the LNC. Now I'll make my motion. Um, because there is challenges and this would help. So going to section one point one one, party records and um. Subsection two, delegate allocation based upon presidential votes. It's up on the screen. Um, this is how, I'm, I'm gonna read how it would read if amended. But everyone can see on the screen, uh, there's only one strikeout. Almost everything is additions in order to. Clarify current procedure and give more authority to the LNC. The secretary shall distribute to each party chair and post on the party website. The presidential vote total set the secretary proposes to use for purposes of delegate allocation. For national conventions as provided for in the bylaws, no later than the last day of April in the year following a presidential election. If any party member seeks a modification of the vote totals proposed by the secretary, the member shall. the member shall file with the secretary a written request to modify the totals, along with any documentation supporting the request, no later than the last day of May of the same year. The secretary shall review all such requests to modify the presidential vote totals and I'm adding and present them to the LNC for approval or disapproval. The secretary shall then distribute a final allocation of delegates based on presidential vote totals, no later than the last day of July of the same year. So, is there a second on that motion? I know that's for you to say, but I'm just curious.
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Malagon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so for months, we've, actually for probably years, we've heard about the secretary's duties and what they are and many of them have not been codified in the bylaws or in the PM. This is one that actually is and I would urge the LNC to vote no on this because this is not our job, it's the secretary's job. And just because she may feel uncomfortable about it or may not want to do it or make this decision, that should not fall on the LNC. This, this seems like a pretty easy thing to vote down. Um, you know, given recent events, so I plan on voting no. I would, uh, hope that the rest of the LNC feels the same way.
Ms. Harlow's?
I'd like to make clear that nowhere did I say that I wasn't willing. Um, I believe that the LNC should have more power as a body than it's had in the past, that it's vested too much power in single individuals, be that the chair or in the circumstance, the secretary. I will give another reason. I have no problem making the decision. I have no problem letting the LNC know that the decision I will, would make if it's left with me is to count the Tennessee totals. Because that is what precedent is, that's what a past secretary had done. However, it becomes very unclear if other states delegate totals get affected, which they can be because everything's shift, shifting proportions based upon what each state gets, that if they think it's the wrong decision, do they have appeal rights? They definitely have appeal rights if the LNC makes a decision. It's unclear. I think they have appeal rights if the secretary makes the decision, but I think it's, it's very unclear. I, I do not know why, when it comes to our convention, uh, that the LNC would not want to have greater control. But if this doesn't pass, I have zero problem making this decision and I'm letting the LNC know ahead of time what my decision would be.
Mr. Malagon, is your hands still up?
Apologies, Mr. Chair, it's a relic, it didn't go down automatically.
Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion on this item? Going once, going twice, going three times? If not, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote.
One moment. Mr. Bost? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Chatterton?
Yes.
Mr. Dar?
Passed for now.
Mr. Dassing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Ms. Halassee?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Malagon?
Nay.
Mr. McGee?
Nay.
Mr. Hurch?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Yanis Scavitch?
No.
Was there any pass, Mr. Dar passed?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, it, your vote would not make a difference?
All abstain.
Madam Secretary, I would like to vote yes. You didn't come back to me after I passed.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Lamb. Okay, it's 10 to 4 to 0, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion passes.
And, Mr. Chair, I note that we, we didn't approve the agenda, didn't really need to be approved, but I had told you from some discussion, so I'll just make a different motion that to move to postpone indefinitely the next item, which is appoint additional IALP rep.
Well, I won't be moving it, or at least I won't be asking for a second. So does it belong to the body when the motion is made regardless if the mover is present? Trying to remember.
No, someone else would have to move it. I mean, notice has been given, so someone else can move it, but if no one moves it, it dies.
So you're making a motion to?
Uh, I'll wait to see if someone moves it.
Yeah, I'm pulling this motion, um.
It be then if we're just gonna, we can just adjourn if that's the last item on the agenda and then just call it a day and bring it up later.
Adjournment's always an order. Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Malagon?
Like to move to adjourn.
I'll go ahead and second, is there any objection to adjournment?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Hinkle, I'd like to make a closing comment if I may regarding.
There, it is highly unorthodox for a member of the public to speak after they've already spoken during public comment. I object to that strongly and my motion to adjourn is still on the table.
I have a very friendly.
The meeting is over.
Do not be speaking right now. Mr. Chair. This is.
Only members of the board can, can interject at this time. This, there's a motion going on. Um, is there any objection to adjournment?
Yes.
All right, then we'll take it to a vote.
One moment.
Well, Mr. Boss, let me know he had to drop, he's gonna plane.
Okay. Mr. Chatterton?
Abstain.
Mr. Dar?
Abstain.
Mr. Dassing? Mr. Dassing, I don't know if you're still here? I'll come back. Mr. Ford?
I vote no, I never want this meeting to end.
I'm gonna vote no. Ms. Halassee?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Malagon?
Aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Hurch?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
I am voting no.
Ms. Yanis Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, um, the motion is for yes, six no, to express abstention.
I'll abstain.
I wanted to just make sure Mr. Dassing didn't come back.
I, I, I vote no.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so it is 472. Mr. Chair?
Motion fails. So we are back on to the.
Well, I would like to.
Go ahead.
I, I was trying to get your attention to, to make a motion to allow limited, 10 minutes of, of closing public comment with, if there's a second, I'll speak to my motion.
Second.
Okay. I think someone seconded, uh, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, to speak to my motion, in the past, when we have finished, um, with time, we have allowed closing public comment. Uh, a member of the public had indicated they would like to address us, so that's it, that's all I have to say.
There's a lot of hands up. Um, Mr. Brown, your hand's still up, I'm not sure if it's meant to be there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, that, that if you adjourn with any items still on the agenda, that that item comes back at the next meeting, it's unfinished business, so.
Good to know. Okay, that's good to know. Um, Mr. Chatterton, you have your hand up, raise?
Uh, I raised my hand for a comment not related to the current motion, uh, before it was made. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to speak now or to come back after this motion is.
I would come back unless it's streaming to this motion.
Okay.
Um, so we'll go ahead with, I believe it was order of, we'll, we'll do Malagon, Thompson, and then JJ with that objection from the body.
Um, I have an objection. Mr. Brown's typically been our parliamentarian.
First of all, we don't have a parliamentarian at this moment. I'll cede to Mr. Jonathan Jacobs, actually.
We're not allowed to cede to a non-member.
Chair, I'm speaking, I'm speaking to the chair right now. You're the secretary, you are not the chair. I just want to be. Speaking to the chair, uh, Mr. Chair, I will cede my spot to Mr. Jacobs and I will lower my hand.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm hoping to speak in public set, in, with the public comment.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Thompson?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to regain trust with the membership. It, it makes a lot of sense to me to allow them to speak. Especially if we're gonna do some games where we use our time and then cede it to others, we might as well just allow public comment.
Uh, Mr. Malagon?
Okay, so I'll just address this now. I mean, Mr. Hinkle, I mean, if we're gonna talk about trust, nothing that we do is gonna be good enough for him. He's a Californian, he's in Santa Clara County. I know what the game is here and I don't think he should be allowed to speak more than the one time that he was already allowed to speak, which went a bit over. But it is what it is. Um, whatever the body decides is fine, uh, if they want to hear from him again. We spent more time arguing about this, we could have been done. And actually, I remember the secretary going on and on uh, before about how this is a two-hour meeting and it's set in stone, so it's really funny that we're at now 6:07 Pacific time, which is two hours and seven minutes over the time, so this meeting should have already been done, but it's not. But whatever, I mean, logic has really just taken a backseat today, so that's fine.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing that, we'll move forward with the vote.
Hey, Mr. Boss is gone. Mr. Chatterton?
Abstain.
Whoops, sorry, that needs to be capitalized. Mr. Dar?
All abstain.
Mr. Dass, is Mr. Dassing here?
Yes.
And your vote is, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
Uh, I wonder if you can, I'm gonna be like this spelling bee person. Can you just re-explain what I'm voting on here?
To allow a closing 10 minute, up to 10 minutes of public comment. A couple members wish to speak.
I will always support public comments, so I vote yes, thank you.
I will vote yes. Ms. Halassee?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Malagon?
I love Mr. Jacobs, but I will respectfully vote no because of Mr. Hinkle.
Mr. McGee?
I love public comment. I vote yes.
Mr. Hurch?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Yanis Scavitch?
Abstain.
And there was a pass, Mr. Lamb? Mr. Lamb?
I'm sorry, yes, I said I abstain as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr., is there anyone I missed, just because people are leaving? Mr. Chair, it's 7:2 to 4.
Here's the problem. And look, I'm not against public comment and I will allow, after the meeting is adjourned, I will allow from time to unofficial public comment. But I don't believe.
I'm sorry?
This is a special meeting and I don't believe we can add new items to a special meeting unless it's through unanimous consent.
Um, business you cannot, um, Mr. Chair, but I believe through a two-thirds vote, you can extend time. We already had public comment. This is basically extending time at the end for additional.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we'd have to do a different motion to extend time. That's not what's happening right now. This is something, adding something to the agenda, which we did not approve, by the way, which we should have done and that was, uh, something that was missed early on, so, um, throwing that out there. It's your call, but I think we should just adjourn and call it a day. If people want to stay on to speak their minds, because that's what they want to do on a Sunday evening, have at it, but, uh, I'd like to go.
That item was already.
If we're curious, just, Mr. Chair, as a point of order, Mr. Jacobs is here, he could kind of shed light on this issue. He is a brilliant parliamentarian. If he, if you'd like to ask him for his opinion, we don't have an official parliamentarian, but, uh, he is a very capable and willing one that has helped us in the past. I would, uh, if you are amenable to it, I would like to hear his opinion on the matter.
That objection, Mr. Jacobs, if you've got an opinion, I'm pretty sure I know what mine is.
Well, um, speaking as a member of the Libertarian Party, I believe it would be in order to do so. Um, basically because this is not, Ms. Harlow's motion is in order. This is not actually an item of business. This is some, um, something dealing with effectively the order of business. You're creating a new, a new, a continuation in effect of something that was already done. So I think you could do it. If there was an agenda, it would take a two-thirds vote or a majority of the entire membership. You didn't actually adopt an agenda and you do have a two-thirds vote and a majority of the, well, you don't have a majority of the entire membership, but you do have a two-thirds vote.
Um, Mr. Brown, do you have any, is, does your opinion line up?
I, I concur with Mr. Jacobs.
Okay, if, if that's the case, then, then I will consider the motion in order and we can move on with public comment. I, I had that concern, but it's been assuaged. And then I see, Mr. Chatterton, you have your hand up. Do you have a point of order?
Or you wish? No, that was just to be recognized after this is finished, uh, same point as earlier.
Okay, so you want two minutes to speak for closing public comment?
Um, after this, before we adjourn. I was taking the floor.
Uh, Mr. Jacobs?
I think Mark Hinkle was first, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
Oh, no, we, we have your hand, so Mr. Jacobs has his hand up first. I would recognize Mr. Jacobs before I would. I was up to the chair because he's the secretary.
I, I would actually yield to Mr. Hinkle.
Well.
May I speak, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, sir. You're recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much for the opportunity to address the body. I am very delighted with the renewed interest in membership and fundraising. As someone who has raised over a million dollars as a volunteer for all three levels, as the Libertarian Party plus the International Alliance of Libertarian Parties, I am very much delighted in the new venue. Uh, s- something Steve and I have for you as a suggestion. When I was Chair, 2010 to 2012, I asked Robert Kraus to give me a list every month of people who contributed a thousand dollars or more. And I'd like to tell you a little short story about one of them, Florida, by the way, who I called up and just said, hi, this is Mark Hinkle, Chair of the Libertarian Party. I want to congratulate you and thank you for your donation of a thousand dollars. This one donor said, so you're not asking for more money, you just want to say thanks. I said, yeah, I just want to say thanks. We really appreciate your support. And he said, well, if I offered you more money, would you take it? And I said, well, Mark, yeah, sure I would. Chat chat it a little bit, got his credit card information, about to wrap up the call. And let's call in George. George says, so Mark, uh, how much you can ask me for? I said, oh, Mark, you idiot. You should always have a goal in mind. And he said, you know, whatever you're comfortable with. He said, no, no, you, you ask me a dollar amount. I said, well, George, you gave a thousand before. I'll probably ask you. I'll probably ask you for a thousand. He said, no, Mark, put me down for five. And that is my suggestion for you, Stephen. Say thank you to your donors as Chair. It would be. Would be well rewarded.
I'll definitely keep that in mind and take it to heart. Thank you very much, Mr. Hinkle. Um, next up is Mr. Jacobs, and then Mr. Malagon and then Mr. Chatterton, Mr. Jacobs.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing me. I will try to be very brief. Um, in dealing with the, uh, Bylaws Committee, while I think that their previous report was quite good. And had a number of good suggestions. Um, I also think that there have been some things that have come up that maybe need to be looked at. And it shouldn't just be limited to what those old suggested, to what those old recommendations were, even though they may be re-adapted. I'm thinking about things relating specifically to disciplinary actions and things that have come up within the last, uh. Six months to a year, that maybe do need to be added to that. Um. That is all that I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, Mr. Malagon.
For Chair, object to being leaped over again for being recognized.
So, well, he named the order and my hand was up, so.
My hand was lowered by someone else, I didn't lower my hand.
Alright, hold on, hold on, hold on. I thought you wanted to be recognized after the public comment, because you just mentioned that before, but then you re-raised your hand. During public comment, so I figured you want to be raised, you want to be recognized now. So it was a little unclear.
Yeah, if there's no more public comment, then I would be the next to speak before Mr. Malagon.
Well, no, this is public comment, this is, I raised my hand for public comment.
You, you mentioned, I want to be raised ever, so I'll just go, Mr. Malagon, since he had his hand up, and then I'll recognize you.
I assumed with Mr. Chatterton, I mean, he can go before me, I don't know how you would speak after public comment, there's nothing on the agenda for that, so his comment would be public comment. If he wants to speak now, he can. I raised my hand for public comment, which I assumed Mr. Chatterton would be speaking for.
Even a point of order.
If there's not gonna be a motion made in Mr. Malagon's speech, then I wouldn't object, but.
Why would there be a motion during public comment?
Alright, I will throw my objection then, and I'll speak after him.
Please, yeah, please record comments towards the Chair. Uh, Mr. Malagon and Mr. Chatterton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so first and foremost, I guess I'll say, I, I am glad that with the EPCC. There was a, um, I'll just say that I'm glad to hear that, uh, there was a consensus regarding Mr. Heiss's now lack of employment. Uh, so, just so that everyone is very clear as to what happened earlier, Mr. Heiss is no longer a contractor for the LNC. So those of you who said that you would donate when Mr. Heiss was no longer being paid by the LNC. Uh, it's time to make good on that, and I'm gonna send some emails out and send some texts and make some phone calls to those of you that said that you would wait until that happened. So that was effective today, as the Chair made clear earlier today. Uh, I'd also like to just point out really quickly, Mr. Hinkle never raised a million dollars, but that's a great story. And, um, I love fiction as much as the next person, so that was fun. That was definitely worth doing public comment over, that was time well spent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chatter.
Alright, um, so, um, thank you. Um, I would like to kind of correct the record on two fronts now, I guess. Um, so as was just brought up, and as was mentioned earlier in the call, that the, uh, separation with Mr. Heiss had been a. Uh, bilateral decision, I can directly confirm that that was not a bilateral decision. Um, and, um, so apparently the Chair and the EPC C are not on the same page on that at the moment, but.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna object to talking about this much about staff issues.
I'll leave that up to be sorted out between the Chair and the EPC C, since their stories are different at this time.
Alright, anybody else?
Uh, I'd like to go again, Mr. Chair, if that's alright.
How much time we have for public comment, ten minutes?
Two minutes, I, I, I think I used thirty seconds, so if you'd allow me a minute thirty. Uh, I've been keeping time as you suggested earlier today, so I promise I'm not extending myself any additional courtesies.
Go ahead, Mr. Malagon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so. I, again, while we're on this, while we're on the fanfiction thing, uh, Mr. Chatterton, you know, comes in with fanfiction, and that's, that's brilliant. And I love that he's sticking up for his guy, you know, it's very loyal, he'll get a lot out of it, I'm sure, but. I do, uh, appreciate that the Chair took, uh, an evaluation of the EPCC's evaluation. Of contractors and staff, and that he made the appropriate decision along with Mr. Heiss, it was a mutual parting. As someone on the EPCC, I can say that. Uh, so I thank the Chair for his candor regarding that matter and other matters, and, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thanks so much, Mr. Chair.
Uh, alright, let's see, Ms. Robinson, go ahead.
It's actually Robson, but thank you. I just wanted to say that Mr. Hinkle has in fact raised. Probably a million dollars for the party with all of his different nationations in the party. As Chair of California, as Chair of the National Party, and as well as Chair of the International Alliance of Libertarians. To say he is not, is not fair to him. He has been a member since the inception of the party almost, and I take exception to that, so I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like, thirty seconds left to public comment, I'd like to say that Ms. Robson said it's absolutely ridiculous, and.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Moved.
I will move. Yes. Um, any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.